...on to decide to go to bond for 500,000, uh, 500,000, um, which failed, as we all know. Um, that bond was for everything. It was to start the new versus reno and from there, go on to the next level, then the next level, then the next level. We didn't want to have to come to the community every time we went to another level. So we, that's why we asked for the amount that we did. Um, so in that failing of that bond, we regrouped and we decided that we were gonna put together, um, a Lisbon High School Facilities Committee, which is these members sitting right here. From my right, it's Lane Curtis from the Advisory Board, Tim Carville, Community Member, Fern Larachelle, Town Counselor, Dawn Fellows, if you can kind of acknowledge, Dawn Fellows Advisory Board, Kathy Juergen, School Committee, Richard Main, Community Member, um, Robin Tupper, Community Member, Kathy Mesmer, Business Manager, Ken Healy, LHS Principal, and Daryl Orr, um, which is the Facilities Director, and myself and Mr. Green. From there, um, we decided to create a webpage, which has a lot of the information, has agendas of past meetings, minutes of past meetings, um, all the NEASK letters, which is, um, why we are really here, um, because of our status being put on probation from NEASK for facility With that, um, the state also had given us, uh, not the state, the federal stimulus money that Obama has given everybody, um, some of that did come to school districts. Each school district was different. Um, our money, the school committee decided was gonna be primarily for the facility of Lisbon High School because of its needs, because of the NEASK probation status. Um, and that is, um, the paper that you see in your folder, um, was the amount in '08, '09, we received 134,508 dollars, and '09-10, 215,640 dollars, for a total of 350,148. So that money is what the school committee had determined to be used for the facility of Lisbon High School.
Thank you. As, uh, as Tracy mentioned, in July, we were notified by the Department of Education that they were gonna be reopening the building applications. Um, so that was one of the main reasons why, uh, the committee, their focus, um, has changed over the course of last year. The bond, the $500,000 bond, what, what most people, um, may not remember is that that was for a, a project that was gonna be totally funded by the community. And the difference would be that the money that we're using now is stimulus money, but that bond was for a locally funded project. Um, and as you, as you see through our presentation tonight, there is, there is a difference, uh, for what we're doing and what we were doing then. So that is the, the biggest question, is what's the difference between the 500,000 we voted down and, um, the money that we're using now is, the money that we're using now is in the existing budget and part of the, um, stimulus funds that we received, um, through the federal government. Also in July, we received notification from the New England Schools, uh, New England Association of Schools and Colleges that the high school is gonna be placed on probation. Um, the point to remember is that the high school is still fully accredited, but it was, it was placed on probation, and, and that's an important, um, point to remember. That was when we really, I think, when we sat down and, and we really took a deep breath and took two, three, four, five steps backwards to really look at where we were and where we were going. And I think that's when the Facilities Committee, when the discussions really started and where the planning really started for all of this, um, and ended up a result in what we're doing this evening. Uh, the Facilities Committee is, uh, obviously an advisory committee. They make recommendations to the school committee, and the, one of the first, uh, recommendations that they made, um, was to have the school department hire an engineering firm to come in and do a new versus renovation, uh, analysis. And that's, that's what we hired, um, our engineering firm to come in and do, and tonight will be the first time that they will be presenting that information to you, the public. The other part that we did hire them for was to complete the actual Department of Ed building application, um, to help us or assist us in that manner. Um, and that is, uh, one of their responsibilities, and we are, it's, it's not completed yet, but it's in the final stages, and, and we are, um, confi-, well, we know that it'll be completed before the June deadline. Some of, in the NEASK concerns, one of the, there's a, in, in the handouts, there is, uh, you will see later on that there are, there's a page from one of our responses to the New England Schools Accreditation and Colleges, uh, there is a, a response from Mr. Healy that outlined a lot of the, uh, issues that NEASK had identified at the high school. Um, and one of the things that, if you look, some of, some of the work that we've already done is, um, we re-, we had to relocate the buses out on the side of this building. Uh, we needed to purchase furniture and, uh, in, install propane and water in our science lab. Uh, we report, we repaired the, the gymnasium floor. There were some tears in the, in the floor. Um, we looked at, uh, we also cleaned and painted the outside. Uh, Richard Main always, he's gonna shake his head over there. He always, always wanted that, so, um, but it makes a big difference when the upkeep of the school. Um, we built a computer room down in the library. Um, we were, we were, we also replaced, as you can see out here, the main lobby, the floor tiles in the main lobby, and, uh, built a computer room in the library and replaced the ceiling tile, uh, in the 300 wing. That was, uh, so far, our work, uh, are small projects totaling around $59,176. Some of the pictures on the webpage, you'll see, uh, pictures of the main lobby, pictures of the side of the gym, and also, uh, pictures of the, uh, science classroom. The stimulus money, uh, Tracy's already, uh, discussed this, the stimulus money that we received, uh, again, the amounts totaled, totaled 350,148 dollars, which the school committee, their priorities or their goals for this, this year, um, have, their goal, their primary goal is to make sure that the facilities are, uh, maintained and upgraded as possible. So we're, we had, um, moved all the money instead of replacing, uh, the budgeted items that we made reductions when we received our subsidy cuts, instead of placing those back in the budget, we, we removed tho-, that, those amounts and allocated this entire, uh, the $350,000 to the, uh, high school. At this time, I would like to introduce, uh, Steven Frazier. He is our, uh, Lead Engineer. Uh, if you, if Steven, if you'd like to come up, and, uh, they do have a, a presentation, and he'll introduce his team. Um, and then at the, uh, then at the end, I, after their presentation, there's a little bit more that I wanted, um, uh, to propose or present to the, uh, community. So, Steven, if, oh, Scott, I'm sorry.
All right. Hi, I'm Scott Simons, and I'm working with, uh, Steve Frazier, Eric Doobie, who is a Greyhound footballer from, I believe, the class of eighty-six, eighty-eight, okay? He was here in eighty-six. He's a sophomore. And Tony Davis. Um, Eric is doing the civil and structural engineering for the project. Steve Frazier is doing the architectural analysis of all the building components, and Tony Davis is doing all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing and life safety analysis of the building. What we're gonna do, this is the first of a series of, uh, workshops, and what we wanna do is present our findings so far. We've spent, uh, the last two and a half, three months, uh, inside the building, studying the systems and the structure and all the mechanical systems and the architectural components of the building to try and determine their condition and their longevity and their ability to either be renovated or whether we needed to build a new building. And tonight is the first presentation which will present our analysis, the findings from our studies over the last three months. Uh, we do have a recommendation at the end of, uh, the analysis that we will come to, but we want to share the basis for our recommendations, and in subsequent meetings, we will show you what, um, this means in terms of, uh, what the, the high school will look like, uh, in the future. Um, so, it's really important for us, and in terms of our application to the State Department of Education, that we get your feedback tonight. Uh, we'll be listening carefully to what you have to say, and when we meet with you again, uh, in a few weeks or a month, we're going to, um, show you, uh, how we've incorporated your ideas into the plan that we're going forward with. This is really a community-wide effort. This is your school. We're here to help you, and we're here to basically share with you. Um, we work on a lot of educational projects for many years, and so we bring sort of an objective viewpoint from the outside of what this school, how it works, how it's working, what its, um, potential life is, and what would re-, be required to renovate it or to build a new one, uh, going forward compared to other schools that we've worked on around the state. So we're gonna start with, um, I believe, the, uh, site analysis. So we're gonna start kind of macro with the overall campus site with the fields and this, the roads and the parking lots and everything, and then we're gonna go to the architectural components, the actual, the, the structures of the building, the roofs and, and the spaces inside, then go right down into the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, heating, sprinklers, all of those things to give you an understanding of what, uh, how we feel the condition of the building is and how that relates to what we think you should do in the future. So we're gonna start with Eric, um, with, and he's gonna do some work, uh, basically take you through the site analysis. Okay, Eric?
All right. Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate that. Um, for those of you who don't know me, uh, my name is Eric Doobie. I am a graduate of Lisbon High School. I was in nineteen eighty-eight, and, uh, one of the other important, um, features, I guess, that I can lend to, to help this, uh, this overall, um, study is that I am also a school board member in my town, and, uh, that is in RSU number five, which is newly created, which is, uh, Freeport, Pownell, and Durham. So, uh, it helps me understand a little bit more of the numbers and what goes on, um, with the committee and what they have to deal with, and, uh, so it gives me a better understanding. I'll start off essentially a little bit of the, the history of the site, since I do know some of that. And, basically, what we've got here is, uh, I'm, uh, I'm sorry, I'll start with the site location. Site location, we talked about with the committee about how important that was and where the existing school is with relation, of course, to the middle school, and how important it is to be near the center of at least one of the towns. In this case, it's Lisbon Falls. Central location came up, and we, uh, we essentially had a straw poll, and a lot of people in the committee liked the location of where the school is. Um, they liked it because you could still have, uh, some pedestrians that can access it. Of course, most of the pedestrian access comes up through here. There's some pedestrian access that come from here. Um, but it, it's a good location. It has good visibility from, um, Route 196, and, uh, so we, we started with that and said, "Okay, that's, uh, we think that's a, uh, it's a really good feature for this." Um, as far as vehicular traffic goes, the vehicular, a little bit of, uh, that's the history I was gonna talk about. A little bit of that is the fact that this used to have two entrances, as most people will remember here. And this entrance was closed off sometime in the mid-eighties, and, um, I, it was basically closed off because of safety concerns that were there, uh, with, um, with the, uh, with the vehicles and the fact that we had two entrances. We used to have, uh, Ridge Road that came down here and then merged in with Route 196, and of course, that got changed at about the same time, and was able to get through traffic through in this one entrance, close off this entrance, and make the site a lot safer. And, in my opinion, I think they accomplished that goal, which was good. Uh, the light was put up a little, um, a little whiles aft-, a, a little bit afterwards, excuse me, and that also helped, uh, the congestion in here, that you had some people that would yield and, and some other, um, some other issues with just the increased traffic with 196, as, as we know, Lisbon tends to be a throughway between, um, Topsom and Lewiston, so there's a lot of traffic for that. Uh, another thing that was done was, of course, the rear entrance that, when I went to school, was typically gated off. So we had the, the issue that we could get around there if, uh, if people needed to, but the gates were rarely open, so it really wasn't a usable access, unfortunately, for us. And, um, in the last six years, uh, that, uh, entrance has been improved, and now what happens is it's used as a bus route, which helps to make this safer because a lot of the buses don't have to come in here, so they're able to come in here and then access around to the sub-school and then back down to the high school, and, uh, and that really improves, again, the circulation around the site, and, in my opinion, makes it a little bit safer. Talking about the pedestrian traffic on the outside, again, the pedestrian traffic comes through here and across here. The pedestrian traffic within the site itself is not as safe or is not as good as it could be. There's not really a lot of sidewalks out there. Um, the light, and that goes along with the lighting. The lighting could be improved on there so that when you're walking either from Route 196 or a store, again, this adjacent shopping mart, uh, we could have better sidewalks that go through and back into the psych school or back down into the rear entrance back in here, and possibly some, uh, some sidewalks down along this road, too. So the pedestrian traffic, in our opinion, really could be improved at this point. Moving on to the drainage of the site, most of the drainage of this site, we have a little bit of wetlands over in, uh, this area behind the softball field. Um, but we've got, uh, most of the drainage tends to flow, uh, to a couple catch basins and then flows down to, uh, an outlet that goes down, of course, to this little, uh, outlet stream which goes down to the Andrusgoggin. Um, there are some isolated pockets. Of course, there's pockets in here that tend to flood sometimes, and there's also pockets, uh, back in here and in other areas that seem like a major problem, but really could be fixed if, with a little bit of pavement shimming and, um, and, and a little bit of grading, and, um, and I think that could be, uh, could be improved, especially for this time of year when it tends to get icy, and, uh, we don't want puddles or ponding or anything like that. We try to avoid that. I spoke a little bit about the lighting, and the lighting itself, most of the lighting that we have for the existing school is, uh, is building mount lighted, lighting, and they face down, but they're not, they're not, uh, um, not great lights, so the site is not well-lit at all. Uh, I think many of us would, uh, would know that as you drive out or as you walk out. It's not, uh, not lit like a typical parking lot, one of the newer, uh, again, like, something like this that has the proper lighting. It's, it's a newer setup, newer development. They've gone through, they've done some lighting analysis, and they've done the, uh, a much better job for that. So lighting is one area that certainly could be improved. Some of the utilities that we have, we have a sewer line that essentially extends out in here, and we have a connection in through where the rear kitchen is, and then another connection in through here that, again, extends out to Lisbon Street. And electrical comes in, of course, we have, uh, a mechanical room over here, so we have the electrical that comes in, um, over on this side, too. And of course, water comes into the school axis through, um, through Lisbon Street also. So we came out, um, uh, of course, we have, uh, let me step back for a second. We have existing fields in here. We've got the existing parking. This parking was added on, um, taking away a little bit of this field. This parking was added on, again, back when this entrance was improved in here. So the parking has improved, uh, in the last fifteen years. The actual, um, field use, this is, this is a good site. I know the fields are old, but we do have a lot of fields here. Of course, we have the football field way down the bottom here, and we're making improvements. The school has been making improvements to that with the fields. I will say, in looking at this study, one of the things that's, it's an intangible thing to try to keep in mind, but when you look at a brand-new school and a brand-new site, there's a lot of cost involved with either permitting or with, um, new site costs that don't always stand out. So it's, it's very difficult to say right up front that this is gonna be the price for this site. It's gonna be $15 a square foot, or it's gonna be $20 a square foot versus the overall. Sites vary, um, they vary a lot, and it is very difficult to put a number on that. Because we have all the field use, we have shared field use and everything here, to go to build a brand-new building with, um, with a new site, you'd have to do new fields. New fields are not, they're not cheap. Um, they are fairly expensive to build, along with, again, all the site grading and the permitting that you need to do with either DEP or DOT, um, with that. So, with this site, we do have some room to grow in here, too. So we, we feel fairly comfortable about, again, the visibility of the site, the central location, and the existing, uh, fields, um, and again, how it is. I know it's a little congested with the middle school, but it, again, it's a nice, uh, the site works very well with the, uh, middle school as far as, uh, as far as overall site security, too. So.
So that was the, uh, the site part. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to
I'm gonna start by walking through everyone the history of the, the building, um, seeing the, the priorities of Lisbon in nineteen fifty-one. The first building that was built was the gymnasium. This was the first, sure, can I get closer? Does that help? Okay, so I'll start again. Um, the first building was built in nineteen fifty-one, which was the gymnasium, which is what we're in right now, and then the year after, this, this wing that is right to the side of us here was built up to about this point right here. And then nineteen sixty-one, these two classrooms on each floor were built, uh, a total of four. And then the next big addition was in nineteen seventy-three, and actually, the firm that Tony works for, Allied Engineering, built the big addition in the back. That includes the science labs, the math rooms, cafeteria in the kitchen, and also the, the library space in the middle. Um, and then since then, there've only been a few minor things. There's a greenhouse added sometime in the, in the eighties there. Um, and obviously the modular classrooms were built or moved in in like, I think, nineteen eighty-five and nineteen ninety-six. Um, and there's also a, a small addition here, the gym, which includes some, uh, varsity locker space and, and bus driver support space. Um, but since then, there, there hasn't been a lot of additions. There was, um, through some of the ADA money, there was, uh, an elevator added in this area here and some handicap bathrooms that really provides vertical access from the lower floor up to the upper floor. A general overview of the, the school building. All the school, uh, construction-wise, is very typical to school construction during that era. There's nothing unusual about it. Um, the school is set up around dedicated classrooms for, for each teacher, which is typical for public schools. Uh, private schools sometimes would have more of a collegiate, uh, setup where the, this, the, uh, teachers go from one room to the next. They're, they're more generalized classrooms. Um, and the construction type, the original building here, these are steel-framed walls with masonry bearing wall down the middle. This building, obviously, is, uh, masonry bearing wall around the perimeter with steel-framed roof trusses. And the, the newer seventy-two addition is all, uh, CMU masonry bearing wall with a steel-framed roof and, uh, concrete slab-on-grade. The layout, obviously, is typical school construction, double-loaded corridors, which is very efficient. Corridor down the middle, classrooms on either side. And it really leads to a relatively efficient use of space in the, in the building. South is generally down in this direction, so it provides good solar orientation to these classrooms. That's the ideal arrangement. And the, the low-slope roofs, uh, provide good drainage off the roofs, but at the same time, if we, if we look to renovate this building, there's a, there's enough of an attic space up in there that we can run air ducts and other utilities through that space, which really is, provides a convenient space for that. One of the difficult locations, and this is very common to older buildings, um, is the main entrance that we all came in, is at that mid-level. So you come in at that entrance, you have to go down the stairs to the lower level or up, up the stairs to the upper level, and that's the real issue with handicapped accessibility. So if you're handicapped in this building, um, at this point, you need to go down to that back door, which isn't always unlocked, um, so it's a challenge. And some of the other deficiencies are, these original classrooms in this wing are a bit smaller than what the state standard would be for classrooms now. Uh, the classrooms in the newer, newer wing are just a little bit low there, but they, they function fairly And overall, the exiting and the life safety, uh, concerns in this building are fairly straightforward. There, there are exits there, exits there, um, fairly, uh, out, out through the building fairly well. There are some minor issues, but overall, the layout from the, from the life safety standpoint's not bad. So going into some more detail, some of the, some of the smaller problems are the handrails, the guardrails and things on the stairs aren't up to code. Um, there are several fire doors on the stairs, on this stair and the far stair. Some of the, the doors into the classroom don't meet current fire standards. There are a few what we call dead-end corridors, which is a corridor, for instance, um, down in here. If you went out down this corridor, that space, once you're at the end of that corridor, you really only have one way out, and it's, it's too far from where you need to be. So that doesn't meet current standards. And there are several ranges in the home act department and even in the kitchen that don't have the proper, uh, fire suppression hoods, uh, that would have to be brought up to, up to, uh, code. And this, this wing, the older part of the wing, all has fire sprinklers, but the newest part of the school doesn't have fire sprinklers, which obviously doesn't meet code. We'll go into more detail on the handicapped accessibility issues for the school. We'd already talked about the, the main entrance not meeting handicapped accessibility, and whether you want, you want the main entrance where everyone, including the handicapped people, come in one point, not, not say the handicapped people have to go around to the side, around the back, um, just to make it fair, but also to, to make it more convenient. The handrails, as we mentioned, don't meet the life safety code. They also don't meet handicapped codes. Um, there were two restrooms added with the elevator project that do meet handicapped accessibility, but all the other public, uh, restrooms, the, the restrooms in the locker room, the showers in the locker room, um, the staff toilets, those toilets in the library, none of that is up to proper handicapped accessibility codes or the drinking fountains. And the fire alarm system is really outdated, um, and it doesn't have the proper horn strobes for visual identification for hearing impaired, uh, that would have to be brought up to code and installed in all the rooms, including the restrooms, that, that everyone would Uh, the next section is, uh, energy analysis. Um, none of the walls are really well-insulated. The newer building is CMU with vermiculite poured into the cores, which provides some amount of insulation, but this building, for instance, has no insulation at all. It's just concrete walls, and the wood that you see on the ceiling has shingles on it, and that's it. This roof over here doesn't have any insulation, but the, the seventy-two addition was re-roofed recently, and when that was done, there is proper, uh, rigid insulation on that roof. The windows in the old addition are all single-pane wood windows that are in really, really bad condition, uh, both from an energy standpoint and from an operational standpoint. The windows in the newer addition are aluminum frame, single-pane windows, which are probably even worse from an energy standpoint, but it, but at least they're more functional and they don't look as bad. The heating systems and controls, and Tony's gonna, uh, go into a lot more detail on that. Um, the controls are all very, very outdated pneumatic controls, which means there's little air tubes that run from the boiler room to each classroom that are leaking and breaking, um, fairly routinely and, and really provide terrible control for the heating. Uh, the boiler is in, is relatively new and in good shape, but a lot of the steam lines, especially in the, in the older portion, all run into the floor, and, and there are constant problems with that. The lighting is, it's not bad. I think they did some upgrades, um, a while back. I think they did some upgrades a while back, but to today's standards, the lighting technology over the last even five years has really improved greatly. And there's, even in the short term, there are great refund programs from Efficiency Main to upgrade that and save a fair amount of energy cost. So we'll go into what I'm calling the programming analysis. As we started off in 1951, the school had eleven classrooms, and currently, we have, there are about twenty-eight classrooms in the building and four out in the modular room. So I think the question a lot of people have is, why do we need more space? Why does it need to be bigger? And a lot of it has to do with the way schools are programmed now. The introduction of mainstreaming special needs children into the school really has a greater demand on space needs. For instance, I think there's five or six dedicated special needs classrooms, which didn't exist in schools, certainly even when I was in school. In addition to that, there's needs for more dedicated one-on-one meeting spaces and workspaces that was cited by the NESC report, and really don't exist in great number in the school now. There's the technology aspect, where there's been one small computer lab added now, but there's really a demand for at least two larger, properly-sized rooms for both student use and for the adult ed. use at night. And the demand on athletic use facilities, the gymnasium. We know this gymnasium's undersized, it has a pretty full schedule, it doesn't meet the size to have regulation tournament games here, and just other multi-use space. You know, we're in here tonight using the gym when it could be used for athletic use. So there's a lot of demand on a pretty small space. School security is another issue. The way the school is arranged with the front office up the stairs, the people working there don't have any idea who's coming in the school. Anyone can walk in, they can walk downstairs to eighty percent of the school. It's difficult to control and secure the building. In addition, we've got the two modular classrooms off the end, meaning those doors on that end have to be left unlocked all the time so students can get back and forth. So in these days and times with security issues, that's a real big concern and something that needs to be addressed soon. So the next part is going back to Eric to talk about the structural findings that he's found.
Appreciate that. I was just thinking while I was sitting there, one of the last times I was doing public speaking, I think, was Ms. Grant made me do it right down in the class. She did, yes. That was a long, long time ago, so... Are we all set? Yep, that's a little better. Okay, so we, my firm was also part of the structural investigation of the existing facility. So we had come in, we basically came in and looked through all the ceiling tiles and covered ground in the school, which was interesting, since I had never done that when I was here. So it's interesting to see portions of the building that I really hadn't seen before. So I'll start with the foundations and talk a little bit about the footings and the foundation walls. But essentially, a little bit before we had started this study, we had been able to do a couple test bits. One of them is in this area and one of them was in this area. So we're able to view the old wing and the new wing, and when we basically dug down and we took a look at the footing walls, and they looked like they were in very good shape. We didn't see any settlement or any other issues like that. Again, walking around the building, taking a look at the exterior brick or the exterior CMU walls, we didn't see a lot of cracks, so that was a very good indication to us right away that there's not a lot of settling that we noticed going on, at least, again, with the foundations. So those look like they're in decent shape. The slabs walking around the first floor, we don't see a lot of cracks. We do see there is a little bit of settlement on the actual slabs themselves. Now, that doesn't necessarily indicate that there's a structural problem when you have settlement on slabs. That just means there could be some sort of drainage going on underneath, or it could be an issue where maybe the fill that was, because they did put fill, of course, back in this area of the site because of this ravine, but that means the fill may not have been consolidated. So that's an issue that we looked at, but we didn't see, we really didn't see any major problems with that. Another issue was, of course, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit, but was, while I'm talking about that, is that this here, this wall, there is a crack in this wall, and we looked at this, but this is really a non-load-bearing CMU wall, and it's been repaired at this time and been painted over also. So again, we didn't see a major structural issue with that. That could be an issue with the fact that we were unable to tell if there's a footing underneath that or if it's just sitting on the slab at this point, so, but we don't see a major issue with that. We looked at, I'll go to the old building, but we looked at the floor framing in the old building, of course, this floor framing here is with steel beams, steel columns, and with wood joists. Typically, you don't see gym floors with like two-by-twelve wood joists, but in this case, of course, it was built in the 50s, so they did use them. We took a look at that, and they look like they're in pretty decent shape. Again, with the steel beams and with the wood joists, we're pretty comfortable with that. The floor framing in this area is a concrete slab with metal bar joists. It's a little more difficult to see that because there's been plaster over that, but we were able to view a couple spots, and again, we didn't see any major signs of rust, deterioration, or anything like that. So those look like they're in pretty good shape also. And again, we looked at the floors, so those look like they're holding up pretty well. We looked at the walls, again, I mentioned the walls, that we did a, we were able to do a nice walk-around around the building, and there is some issues with some of the masonry. It could use some repointing and other things, but we don't, again, don't see any major structural issues as far as any deflections or any bowing of the walls or any settlement of that. So we think that, again, is a good sign and works out very well, especially given the age of the building. The roof, we took a look at the roof, again, the roof in this section is framed similar to the floor with some metal bar joists supporting a slab on top, and this is the flat roof section in here. In here, there's some wood joists over where the elevator is and, of course, where the concession stand is. I'm sorry, that's on the upper floor, but... And then in here, of course, we've seen this roof, you can see by this roof, it's in pretty good shape. The frames, I did notice when I came in, that the frames, they've added on some structural tees to the bottom of the frames, and they've added in these knee braces, and that was certainly since I graduated back in ninety, in eighty-eight. So I'm not quite sure why they added that, but it does give it a little more strength, and we're still in the process of analyzing that if we're talking about adding in some more insulation in order to get a little better efficiency, especially in this space here. The roof that is in this section in here is essentially metal bar joists that are slightly sloped, that are three feet on center, and those go up essentially to a, to these bearing walls, which are CMU bearing walls in the corridors. And then they do have a couple steel beams with a central steel beam in the center, and then two steel beams, big steel beams across here with steel beams coming across. But, and so we took a look at that system, and again, we didn't see any major deterioration, any other settlement or any issues like that, so we were pretty happy with the condition of the existing roof, which means that they've probably had maybe some leaks in the past, but there haven't been, they haven't done any damage or, again, presented any deterioration to the overall structure. So that was overall our assessment of the building, and in summary, at least for the structural portion, we feel pretty good about the building. And I know, I think one thing that was in the NEASH report was the issue about the cracking that was in the cafeteria, and again, that's what I addressed before. It's a non-bearing, non-load-bearing wall, so if it is cracking, it's not going to be a structural issue or we have an issue with the roof caving in or anything like that. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Tony.
Well, good evening. My name is Tony Davis. I'm with Allied Engineering, and has been, as has been stated, my task on this team was to take a look at the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection systems for the building. We'll start with the heating system. How's that, better? All right. We'll start with the boiler, the heartbeat for the building. The boiler was actually replaced in about 2001. It's about nine years old, or close to nine years old, in decent condition. It's a steam boiler. Unfortunately, steam boilers are a little bit less efficient than hot water and a little bit more difficult to control. The good news is it's in good condition, and the boiler does have some ability to be converted to hot water if we choose to go that route. From the boiler room, the nineteen-fifties wing basically is still a steam wing. It was built as a steam-heated wing, and it currently is heated with steam piping. There's basically unit ventilators in each of the classrooms that bring in outside air through a heating coil to heat up the space. Again, these unit ventilators are original to the facility, which puts them at forty years, forty years plus, fifty years plus old. They're outdated. The published service life for a piece of equipment like that is probably twenty-five years. So you've definitely gotten your money's worth out of those unit vents, and, you know, after twenty-five years, things start loosening up, dampers don't work the same way anymore, motors aren't as efficient as they should be. So there's definitely, you know, room for some replacement there. Out in the seventies wing, that is actually, in the boiler room, there's what's called the steam converter, where steam converts water, or the steam is converted to hot water for heating. So this wing actually has a more modern hot water heating system. Again, though, the unit ventilators are original to the facility, you know, they're well beyond their predicted useful service life. To talk a little bit more about ventilation, in the nineteen-fifties wing, there's basically central exhausts in the corridors, which the outside air that comes into the classrooms spills out into the corridors through transfer grills in the doors, and then is pulled out of the corridors through the roof. The units that pull this air out of the corridors are not mechanically driven, they're wind-driven turbines, which are difficult to balance. Couple drawbacks to a system like this, it's difficult to control the airflow, and it's difficult to control pressurization in spaces, which is pretty critical to space comfort and indoor air quality, and energy efficiency as well. So right now, we don't have a lot of control of where the air is going in the spaces, and that's leading to some of the temperature controls problems I think we're having in the facility. Out in the seventies wing, again, there's really, the unit ventilators are bringing in outside air by original design, but the exhaust is limited, it's difficult to control pressure in those spaces, and a lot of it is done just through gravity relief. Ventilation in the science rooms, there is, I guess, some, or one at least, hood for chemistry, but by modern standards, we would need to add a little bit more exhaust to make sure that we can deal with contaminants if there's a spill. Life skills classroom, we've got some ranges, or A range in that room with no hood over it. Current codes would require us to put a NFPA-compliant hood over that range with fire suppression, similar to what you have in your main kitchen. In the shop areas, again, there's some ventilation present, there's a through-wall exhaust fan in the art room, for instance, but current standards would make us put a little more ventilation in the air and a little more pressurization control. Temperature controls in general, I think, is the biggest issue that we saw with the ability to control temperature in the spaces. The good news is, you know, steam is a hot heat, we're able to keep the building warm. The bad news is it's very difficult to control, and combined with the fact that you have older pneumatic system, as Steve mentioned, in the facility, with some leaking tubing and in addition to being a maintenance nightmare, you have a system that's pretty difficult to control. As we know, with steam, the coils heat up very rapidly, but they cool down real slow. So even after you stop calling for heat, you've got heat for quite a while in those spaces. In a modern world, we, with hot water and electronic controls, we'd find ourselves with a lot easier system to control. Talk a little bit about the gym. I mean, obviously, we can see as we look around, there's heat in the gym from the steam system, but very little to no ventilation. Back when these facilities were built, they're pretty loose, you get a lot of infiltration from the outside air, which keeps them from getting stuffy. As we start tightening the spaces up, bringing them up to modern standards with insulation, we're going to need to bring the ventilation systems up to current code requirements. Plumbing systems, again, for the most part, the fixtures, and Steve touched on this a little bit, most of the fixtures are original to the facility construction, they're dilapidated, they don't meet ADA requirements in many instances, although in some cases, there have been some replacements. But in general, the facilities are outdated, the fixtures are outdated and in need of some replacement. The fire protection systems, again, Steve alluded to this already. The fifties wing was actually built with a sprinkler system, and I think that was mostly driven due to the fact that you have some wood construction in this building, and it required, especially in the assembly spaces, fire protection to help control the event of a fire. When the seventies wing was built, Allied designed that one, unfortunately, it was before my time as an engineer, at least. I wasn't involved in that one. My guess is, at the time, NFPA requirement said that, you know, if you build this thing out of non-flammable materials, you don't need sprinkler systems. Current codes would dictate something completely different. If we touched that wing today, we'd have to sprinkler that wing, and I'm sure that's no surprise to anybody in today's world. The electrical systems, again, I think they're functioning fine, they're not overtaxed, and we didn't see any major safety concerns, but they're at capacity. The electrical power distribution system is at capacity, the fire alarm system is at capacity, intercoms have very little room for additional capacity, and they're outdated. It's difficult to get parts for the electrical system that you have here. If things fail, it's a nightmare to try to search things down and get things repaired. So, you know, I don't think there were any surprises, there's no imminent dangers here, but it's just a typical old building with old systems that are difficult to control, they're not efficient, and they don't have room for expansion. Turn it back over to you, I guess, Steve.
So we're going to start wrapping up our portion here. The last part I have is what we're calling critical issues that we're most concerned about, and the first one is the rental. Can you put those up? Find the button. We were hoping to get two projectors running, and that failed. The critical issues, the first one we have on the list is the rental of the two modular units. It's costing money, obviously, every year, it's not great classroom space, it causes security access problems because the doors have to be left open all the time. The next one on the list is a failing, uninsulated roof gymnasium. We obviously have a lot of energy loss through here, and one of the other issues is we can see all the peeling paint up here, that's because there's no insulation, so the hot air goes up, it condenses on that cold surface and appeals the paint off. So that one, and also, the roof on this gym is in really bad shape and dire need of replacement. So the insulation and the roof on that could all be done at the same time. The deteriorated windows in this original wing, they're wood, they're rotted, they're single-pane, some of them are really poorly operational, that needs to get addressed. The obsolete and failing pneumatic heating controls, if we could have better control over at least the older heating system, that would be a big improvement and provide some energy savings. The gymnasium is not of required regulation size, so this is too small, and we mentioned that before, and it was cited several times. So, this is too small, and we mentioned that before, and it was cited several times for issues in the NEAS report. The storage, obviously, this is your gymnasium storage, right in the sidelines and all of this. The stage behind us is the same thing. It's become a big storage closet, because there's no additional space in this school for storage anywhere. A lot of that's spilling over into the classrooms. The classrooms are small, and they're also serving as storage spaces. Shortage of adequate classroom and support space. We talked about that, a lot with the special ed spaces. They require a lot of smaller, specialized spaces that simply don't exist. Support spaces for teachers to meet, for private meetings, conference room spaces, they don't exist. Inability to properly secure the building, we mentioned this before. The building needs to be able to be locked down immediately if something happens. And adequate control of who's in and out needs to occur. Handicapped accessibility, it's a right that people have, and that should be provided so it doesn't cause them inconvenience and issues. And Tony mentioned this a little bit, but the electrical service in the building is in really poor condition, and Darryl's really kind of collecting pieces and parts that he can keep it operational. So, he can talk more about that. Those are the main panels down in the basement. So, the conclusion, and hopefully, we haven't given you too much bad news. The site is suitable to expand. Let me move this forward. We feel that the site is suitable for an expanded school here. Not, we don't feel you need to build a new school. There's nothing we've seen here that indicates that it should be torn down or abandoned. We do a lot of projects, some schoolwork. And just an example, we just did a project close to here. I won't give the name, but some of you might figure it out. We worked on a building that wasn't built in 1940, but it was built in 1840. It was five stories tall. The ceiling heights were almost seven feet tall. And we went in, and it was a space a little bit smaller than this. We tore out five floors of floors in that building, and it was kind of cathedral-like when we were done. It was just brick, big brick walls and a wide-open space. We built our new floors. The original heating system was 30 wood-burning fireplaces. So, we put a modern heating system, radiant heat, a high-efficiency boiler in the basement, and it turned out fine. And it was expensive, but it wasn't outrageously expensive for what they got. So, when we look at a project like this, it's not only reasonable, it's relatively easy compared to that. So, we're pretty confident in seeing that this could be renovated and added on to meet the needs of the school. The existing structure, or Eric pointed out this, the school being adjacent to the existing athletic fields is critical when you look at, when we start looking at cost of developing a new site. Alternatively, if we looked at a new school, we could probably look at building it on another part of this site, but then you'd end up probably building it on the athletic fields, and you'd have to rebuild those athletic fields anyway. So, that's a pretty expensive proposition. The existing structure, the layout of the school, it was designed as a school, it still works relatively well as a school. A lot of the smaller classroom spaces on here might not stay as classroom spaces, but they could be used as those smaller support spaces that we talked about. There's a lot of problems with the, below here, the gymnasium, or the locker rooms are in the back. There's an art room and shop classes here. You can imagine, if you're playing basketball up here, what the art class is like downstairs. So, the space under here is not great for classroom space, but it's certainly great for storage space, which we're really lacking. Let's see. When we apply for funding for the school from the state, the state looks favorably upon projects that renovate existing buildings. You're going to get a little bit more points on the application for that. It's more sustainable to renovate this project, and we've got this word in here, embodied energy. That means all of the energy that went into this project, the casting of those steel beams, the transportation of that steel, the labor that went into building this building is what embodied energy is. And if you abandon this, tear it down, you lose that energy. So, you have to consider that when you're talking about efficiency of building. That's the embodied energy calculates into the efficiency of a new versus old building. It would save the cost of purchasing, permitting, and developing a new site. So, purchasing a 35-acre site somewhere appropriate in town would be expensive, if even possible. The permitting cost, especially for all the site drainage and DOT permits and stuff, is lengthy and very expensive. And just simply the cost of developing a new site with utility infrastructure, roads, athletic fields, all of that can really add up. It's a lot more than just the construction of a new school building. And as Eric said, the basic skeleton, the foundation, the structure of this building is relatively good. There are no major problems with that. And the last bullet point I have is the phasing of this construction is possible. It wouldn't get done all at once. You can't obviously come in here and renovate the whole building in three months during the summer, but you could phase the construction of a new wing while school's going on and get in and quickly renovate those wings, maybe one wing a summer, and take a few years and renovate them, do a major project that would be required to bring this all up to So, the next thing I have is short-term goals. And these are kind of agreed upon by the facilities committee. And Richard can probably elaborate on some of this, but the number-one goal is to terminate the lease on the modular units and get those out of the way. The next one on the list, I can forward this. The next one is to relocate the main office, which is up on this floor, move it down to the lower floor. And that solves a few problems. What it would do is, it allows a single entrance to be down there, adjacent to the administrative offices. So, during the day, when classes are in schedule, all the doors around the building can be locked. That would be the sole entrance point for people coming to visit during the day. It'll have visual access, obviously, by people working at the counter, and everyone, including the handicapped, can come through that door. All the other doors will be locked down, and if there's an emergency situation, the building's secure. The space that's currently occupied by the admin office upstairs would be converted into two classrooms. So, there'd be a net wash in the classroom space. And the goal of the committee would be to start renovating the street side of this original addition with new siding and new windows, to give a better appearance for the school, and to start on the goal of energy reduction for this facility. The last slide I have is long-term recommendations. Long-term, sure. Long-term recommendations, and this is distant in the future, not something that's going to happen this year or next. And it's really tied to the application of the state for funding. Would be to construct a new gymnasium. This one's too small. For structural reasons, it's very difficult to make a gym larger. You just can't blow that wall out and make it 10 feet larger. So, it's really necessary to build a new gymnasium that's a modern high-school gymnasium size, that would have a curtain down the middle where you could have two practices at once, the male and female practice, or however it works out. In addition to that, there's probably around 24,000 square feet of additional classroom and support space that would be needed to meet the projected enrollments, which are increasing when you look out six years down the road, I think. Yeah. The long-term goal would be to renovate the entirety of the remaining school of this wing, the rest of the wing. That would bring everything up to life-safety standards, accessibility standards, and replace the outdated systems that Tony detailed, the heating, electrical, plumbing fixtures. And new finishes, which would include flooring, paint, ceiling fixtures, windows, things like that. A project of this scope, and they're going to go into more detail on that, would need to be accepted and funded primarily by state school construction and renovation program. And the work that we're doing is really doing the analysis and filling out the application that will be submitted to the state for those funds coming in the spring. And that's really the last part. So, I think you want to finish up?
Thank you. After receiving this information from the engineers, the bottom line is that the high school can be renovated, and I think that was one of the biggest questions from members of the community. What we had heard is that people were under the impression that the building could not be renovated. And so, that's why we were always asking for a new building application. However, with this information, knowing that the building can be renovated, the question that most of you are probably here is, well, how do we pay for it? And one of our goals as a facilities committee has been to bring a reasonable proposal to the community with little or no impact, new money, to help start or do pay-as-you-go projects. And I think the facilities committee has done a really nice job working together. We all have different ideas, and we've met and we've talked about different things. But the money that we do have to do some of this work comes from our existing budget, which we have about $12,421 in our regular budget for facilities money. We still have the remaining $263,171 from the stimulus money that we have set aside for renovations at the high school. And what I would like to propose, or what will be proposing to the school committee and presenting to the town, the public, is we have a bond proposal of $350,000. And when I started this, I said that we wanted to do this with little or no impact to the community. And what you will see, and what most of you probably have read in your handouts and have been waiting to hear about, is how are you going to pay for a bond, or how can you have no impact on the community or taxes when you're asking for a bond? And I know that that word is, that perks a lot of years in this town. And so, what we are proposing is, instead of going out for new money, is to use money that's already in the budget to pay for a bond, because right now, we are paying $25,100 a year for those two, excuse me, two portable buildings. We also have an expiring bond that we just paid off this year for $24,852. So, we have, in our budget already, we have enough, we have $49,952, which, depending on the interest rates, we should be able to secure a bond of around $350,000. So, that's where it's coming from. It's no impact. It wouldn't be any increase in, it wouldn't be any new money in our budget. It would be using the money that we have in our budget to do a larger project, because if you've listened tonight, you've probably heard all the things that are wrong with this building. They are things that are expensive, but we do have some priorities. We have some things that we can afford to do, and we're hoping that if we add both the bond, the stimulus money and existing facilities money, that we will be able to do as much of that work now versus later. Again, this is not new money. It's reassigned from other budget lines, and that we'd like to add to the stimulus money that we already have set aside. Realistic funding priorities. The engineering, as you've heard from the recommendations, the side-end windows on the north and south side, a main entrance, the gym roof, existing classroom space. We would like to move the art room out from underneath this, the gym, and bring music into another area. Heating and electrical system upgrades, obviously, if we upgrade our heating and electrical, we're going to be, save money and energy. Why do we want to do this, or why, or the reason why we're looking at this stuff? It addresses the NEAS concerns. In the handout, as I mentioned earlier, the, there's a letter, a response to the, from Mr. Healy, that outlines all of the, or some of the NEAS concerns, and what you can see from our work already is that we're addressing as many of those as possible, based on what money we have available. We'd like to secure the building. With the portables outside, students, those doors are unlocked. The doors out front are accessible. Whenever we've had to do a lockdown, the custodians have to physically go around and manually lock all the doors. So, we would like to have the building secure, have one main entrance, that again, is handicap accessible. And with whatever money we have to work with, we would again, upgrade the energy efficiency, which of course, would give us additional savings. The timeline will be, on Monday, I'll be presenting this to the school committee for their approval. Then it's introduced to the town council. We'll have a public hearing. Town council will, a town council will choose to adopt the order, and then it would go to a referendum vote. And we do have a timeline set up for that. So, we'll be sharing that information. Tonight is kind of twofold. One, we're going to be, tonight, I'm presenting to you a proposal for a bond. The engineers are talking about the new versus reno analysis, and then they'll be talking about the building application. So, from here, we kind of break off, and we'll have discussions on the actual bond, and then we'll have discussions on the information or the building application that we have here at the high school. As we know, as I started my, when I first started speaking tonight, I mentioned, what's the difference between the $500,000 bond last year and the $350,000 bond this year? The $500,000 bond last year, again, was for a totally locally-funded project. The bond tonight is using existing money to help, I mean, $49,000 a year to do facilities repairs, won't get you as far, obviously, as $350,000 at once. We could probably get, you know, the south side or the roof or another major project done. And right now, with the way, the situation, the economy, we are finding that the bids on any of our projects are coming in much lower, because people are really looking for work. And now is the time to, one of the questions that people have asked, why do it now? Why not wait and see what's going to happen with the state? We've been applying for this, the state application for over 20 years, I believe. I've seen the records of the different applications. We probably, for 50 cents or 75 cents on the dollar, might be able to get some of this work done, and I think the facilities committee agrees that if we have some money now, we should try to do as much as we can with it. Also, we don't know what's going to happen with the building application. We'll be coming back to you if, when we have that information. They will be coming and doing site reviews in June, and then, once we know what's going on, then we'll be reporting back to you. But we really hope to get, to address a lot of the NEAS concerns, and hopefully, we can maintain, well, hopefully, we'll be off probation, and that is ultimately our goal. Now, I know that's a lot of information, and I know that, but that's the information that we needed, and the information that a lot of people have been asking for over the last few years. So, what we'd like to do now is turn the rest of the lights on, so some people wake up a little bit. But also, we'd like to open it up for questions, and as I said earlier, if you could just, if you could line up behind the microphone and just ask your questions. We do have members of the facilities committee, people here to try to facilitate this, but we do have people who have questions. And what I'm, what we're hoping to do is write those questions down, and then prepare not only the questions, but the answers as best we can for our webpage and facilities, so that people can go there and keep track of what we're doing. So, I appreciate your patience. I really appreciate people coming out tonight. I know that when we talked at the workshop, people were concerned about how many people would actually show up. I think this is a good example of the fact that people are interested in this high school and are interested in what we're doing. And I hope that the information that we provided you tonight is helpful, and we keep everybody informed. Again, there are surveys in the handouts that we gave. For those people that don't feel comfortable coming up and speaking in the microphone, you can do those online, or you can leave those in the box. One thing that I forgot to mention is that the bond is for 10 years, and that was on that, I know I wanted to mention that, because that may be a question. So, at this point, if people want to come up and ask questions, we'd be more than happy to do our best to answer those.
My name is Kristi Branson, and we've lived in the community for about 19, 20 years. We have two boys. Our second is a junior this year. Even though he will be graduated before pretty much anything is done, or too much is done, I still feel very adamant that I need to speak out for the rest of the community. And I just feel very... And I just feel very adamant about that, that no matter what I feel, good or bad, it needs to be heard. When you're talking about long-term goals, how, like, when the bond for 10 years, is that paying it over 10 years, or?
Yes, we've been making payments. We're waiting on interest rates for the bond to find out exactly how much we can, we can get. I know that in, obviously, interest rates were, I'm not sure where they are. I think we estimated around four, 4% around there. So, once we go through the application, we would, we'd be paying the 49, the $49,000 a year would pay for the bond over the course of 10 years.
Okay, that was my other question. I guess the biggest question is why were no renovations at all done for several, several years? I don't understand that. I mean, we must have known 10, 15 years ago that things needed to be done. I do not understand why it's taken so long to come to this point where the state says we will not be accredited because we're not doing our part.
Well, you know, we've heard that question before. We have put money into the facilities, but where, you know, where that money has gone or what people see has been done is difficult. I know Daryl or Mr. Orr could talk about the money that we put into the different facilities. But again, if you saw our budget, we have $12,000 in our budget for facilities, and that, in the grand scheme of things, is, is not a lot of money.
And that's part of the problem, is there isn't a lot of money, and we all don't want our taxes up. But, do we want our children to not have a good education? I mean, I think we all definitely want that.
The school committee, I'm sorry, the school committees, as I mentioned at the beginning, the school committee's primary goal, or number one goal, was to maintain this facility and do as many upgrades as they can. They designated the entire stimulus money for repairs at this high school. We've only put $50,000, a little over $50,000 into the high school. And you would be surprised at how visible the places that we've made those changes, how many comments, positive comments that we've heard from people. So we are, we do have a limited budget, I agree. And we are, as a committee, I mean, we come from every different angle, we're doing the best we can. But that's why we're hoping to use existing money to get more done. Because, you know, realistically, we may not be approved for a building project, and the town has already told us that they, we're not in a position to pay for a project on their own.
Right. Apparently, with the new elementary school, the older ones must have been worse than the high school. Is that why the elementary school was made before anything but the high school?
At the time that we applied for the elementary schools as well as the high school, both applications went in, the state determines which facility needs to be replaced. So that's why the elementary schools were merged into one building, is that that is what the state gave unless-
Now, was that because of the buildings themselves were too-
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about that.
Yeah, that's what, they go, just like they will in the summer, they'll come through the building, raid them, and then it goes on a list for however many applications came in. And each has a point system.
Okay. Does that go with, where, you were saying that, I think it was Mr. Green was saying that for 20 years, we've putting in an application?
Yep.
And why has nothing ever been? I mean, I don't understand, for 20 years, we've tried.
From the state level, from the state level, what the state does is when you open up applications, you, any school in the entire state can do it. What they haven't been really good at is, those states who really need it, they don't freeze the list and work their way up, they reopen it to everybody. There were talks prior to February that they were going to do that, and we were seventh the last go-round. That they were going to freeze the list and then work away from there. But then they told us that they didn't have any money. And now with the federal stimulus money, they're putting in, and that's an important piece of information, they're only putting in $120 million for the state application round.
Right, and that's for all the schools, right?
Which doesn't seem, it's not a lot. It seems like a lot to me, because $120 million's a lot. But as far as, I think the average cost of building a brand-new high school is what, 60? Is it 25?
Million?
I thought it was more towards 40. So that's not very many projects. And some, some projects are also looking at, including up in, I think, Rockland area, vocational centers, like colleges, too. So, that's not a lot of money to give out.
Because it is for the whole state, correct?
Because it is for the whole state. But we're hoping that we are going to be shovel-ready, and they'll notice that we want to renovate rather than build new, so they're-
Right. Well, it's good to know that you've been adamant, because apparently, in some ways, it has worked. It's made them stop to a point and realize that they've got to stop at a point and look through what really needs to be done compared to just going, oh, sure, we'll give this guy money and this guy money and whatever.
They didn't free, I don't want to, they did not freeze the list.
Oh, they did not?
They did not freeze the list.
I thought you said that, I'm sorry.
No, there were talks about it, but they did not choose to do so.
I guess, geez, I don't know. Is it any good to call or write this, our senators or anything? Is there, I mean, it's so hard, because I realize we can only do so much as a community and even as a school. But I mean, this is, this is just ridiculous.
For someone that has written our US Congress-
Several times.
I have written those letters, and I was laughed at by my former English teacher, and I just got generic responses back.
Right. And I unfortunately assume that. The bond, I guess the last question I have really is, the bond that we did vote on last year was the $500,000 one, wasn't that supposed to be for the school, but it was, said it was for something else?
The school committee was recommending that we had gone to propose that we do a locally-funded high school. And to do so, we asked for $500,000 to get all the work done, from nuts to bolts.
Just for the high school, you mean, though?
For, for a, for a new high school, whether it's renovation or construction. We were looking to ask the town to start that process with that $500,000 to fund it ourselves. And that was obviously voted down. Richard Main has something to add.
Yes. I've heard over a number of years that there weren't things done to the school because they were always in hopes of next year getting on the list and being approved. But when that question came up during our facilities meeting just recently, the facilities committee said, no, these issues are too critical to wait until maybe. And even though we would not get reimbursed for the monies in the bond as a community, we have determined that those issues are important enough to do it with the existing monies, as Mr. Green has explained, and not wait for someday later on when the roses might be blooming.
Especially when it's already been two decades, so I can understand that. Which is great. I'm very glad to hear that what money we do have, we are putting to use ourselves. Because that is also showing them, the state or the government, that we're going to do it no matter what, because we give crap.
Richard brings up another point. What has happened in the past, too, I don't think it was ever kind of said that they frowned upon improvements, but we've been told, I went to a conference, school board conference, and Superintendent Green went to his school board, his superintendent conference, and the message was that any renovations done to a building will not hurt you on the state application. So that was good news as well, for us moving forward.
Definitely. So mainly it's just the state and their mess-up.
Thank you.
Something you were right, thank you.
Ryan Booker, I graduated from Lisbon in 1997. I got three kids, and hopefully they'll come here, too. I just had a couple of quick questions. One, we're currently on probation. Is there a timeframe that we have to show considerable improvement to the school before we're not accredited, or they take us off probation, or?
We have to do, Mr. Healy might be able to speak on this, but they, we have to submit reports, and those are available. You'll see the different communications between NIASC and the high school online.
Is there a defined, is there a defined time where we eventually go from probation to losing our accreditation? There's not a defined time. But if the community does not step and do small, at least small incremental improvements to this building, that's when we'll get the tag. One of the things is for accreditation, it's every 10 years. And what we are doing is we're coming up on our five-year report. And that's really the crisis that we're in right now. We're coming up to that magical five years. If you haven't done anything, you haven't got a funded project to improve the building, that's when they'll start to question whether you guys, you guys, meaning the community and the building, and the school, whether you have the, the will to improve the facility. So, we have, every 10 years, and five more years, we're going to be accredited, they'll come again. If we haven't lost it completely, they'll come out and reassess us. If in fact, we have made those improvements, either through a renovation or upgrades, slow upgrades, that we can ask them to come out sooner, and hopefully they'll get us an improved status. But there's not a defined time, as long as we're making slow incremental improvements, they're very likely to keep us on probation. They'll take us off probation and lose our accreditation if we do nothing. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. Another one, you talked about getting rid of the lease of the modulators to help pay for the bond. Is there enough current room in the high school without the modulators to accommodate the children that would, that would not be in the modulators?
Well, currently, there's, there's not enough room. But what we would have to do internally is, and we do this already, we have teachers who do not have their own room, they share classrooms. The engineers had mentioned that the model, private schools, they, teachers bounce back and forth. We just feel, as a committee, and I think as a community, that spending $21,000 a year on a lease, when we can turn it into something else and maybe, you know, do some changes internally, that, that's more beneficial. So, short-term, there is, from fifth grade down, there's a pretty consistent number of kids, and I, you know, I feel, and I've talked to the school committee, that enrollments until that sixth grade class, fifth grade class, sorry, is sophomores, juniors, the high school, the high school population is going to go up. This year, I think it's down 10, 15, it's going to go up 20 next year, then it'll go down 20. We feel that it'll be five, six years before we have a real issue, as long as the enrollments are sustained in that fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, second grade, et cetera. But that is just one of the sacrifices that we'll, we'll have to make, and we, unfortunately, teachers will have to share classrooms, and may not have their own space. But that is the way it is right now. And it's not a popular, probably won't be very popular, but it's something that we'll have to do.
And just one other quick one. Now, you talked about the crack in the wall down in the cafeteria area. Now, the Association of Schools and Colleges said that that was a problem, and it was a major issue. Would a recommendation from one of your firms, would that satisfy them, that crack? You said it's been repaired and painted, but did they see that crack as a bigger issue?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree that, I think that if, if we did that, we've already worked about the cafeteria size, that's one of the NIAS things, and Steve's actually worked on that, and that issue has kind of washed away. I believe you're absolutely correct that we could do that, and that would be, we can essentially make that go away. So, okay.
This is kind of a related topic. Another thing on the NIAS report was your cafeteria is too small, requiring three lunch periods, which interrupts the student schedule. But the three lunch periods is actually the state standard, and we've already talked with NIASC, and they've agreed that that's, if that's the state standard, it can be acceptable with them, and they'll take that off the list.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sylvia White. I've lived in Lisbon all my life, my husband, too. He coaches here at the high school, and we have three girls currently in the school system. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Again, I'm Sylvia White, and I'm a member of the town of Lisbon, as well as my husband. Our three children are here in the school system, and my husband coaches at the high My, I guess, as far as being on probation, once we have these short-term goals in place, and they hear that we're working with the firm, and they said the crack is okay, and that the three lunch periods are okay, will that take us off probation, or after long-term goals?
I think Tim says it the best, is that when we're dealing with the NIAS report, it's kind of a moving target. And, you know, they came and visited and picked out a few, a few other things that they've added. The letters and the reports, it's, it's not like the list stays the same all the time, and that's what we kind of found, and it's very frustrating. I don't know what it would take to take us off probation, but I feel that the work that we have done in the last few months, and the work that we will continue to do, is significant enough to, you know, assure us that we're not going to be, you know, we're not going to lose our accreditation. We may not get off probation. I know that there is at least one school in the state of Maine that's been on probation for over six years, I believe. We may not get off probation until we do some major renovations. But I know that Mr. Healy spoke with the representative from NIAS just a few days ago, and they were very happy to hear the work that we've been doing, and the potential of the work that we could do.
Okay. The $350,000 bond, plus the stimulus money, plus the money we have in our budget over the 10 years, will that, that will cover everything? The new gym? No?
No.
It's just the short-term. Okay.
I asked the engineers, I asked the engineers to specifically to probably, to stay away until, stay away from any type of quotes, to give us hard, you know, not rounded-up numbers, 250,000, 500,000. I'd like to know exactly what it would cost. So, you know, probably, our first, or our last couple of meetings, we went from, you know, the possibility, thinking that what we could get for 700,000, but when you really look hard at it, it actually came out to one point, 5 million. And that's just for, you know, some, some small renovations. We believe, priority-wise, we have set short-term priorities, and we talked about the north side of the building, the main entrance. Now, we feel we can probably, we can do that with existing money, the stimulus money we have now and existing money. What we're hoping for is to have the additional 350,000, so that we can do something, whether it's with the south side windows or heating units.
It's, it's very poor, as you know.
We, I'm sorry. Yes, we actually have a subcommittee. We've been working with the town councillor, town manager, members of the town council, members of the community. We actually have a track committee. We are attempting or researching a grant that we are hoping to secure that would help us renovate the existing track area. But again, that's, that's long-term, and, you know, grants are grants. You can, you can apply all you want, it's not, you don't necessarily get them. But we are looking into that, because we know that's a concern, especially with the new path being built. That actually, I believe, ends right behind the track area. It would be really nice to be able to renovate and have people be able to walk off the, off the walking path right onto the track and use that.
Because the improvements down there right now are wonderful.
What's that?
The improvements that have been made down at the football field are great. It's really nice to see the work being done. And the application that we'll be passing in in the spring, what is a general timeline of when we would hear back and construction would start?
Kathy, what's-
Or is that unknown? If it's unknown, it's okay, I just-
It's-
I have lots of questions.
I can give you a basic idea. The application is due June of 2010. We should hear back by July of 2011. After that, it's a long process. After that, after you total everything up and the whole steps, if we get approved, it takes about four and a half years between applying to when the new school is done and you walk in the front door. Just to let you know. And that's approximate.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity for this meeting tonight. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Gagnon, and I've been a member of this community for about 18 years now. I've graduated three sons from this high school, and I got two on the way up. My question is, what happens if we keep getting denied? What happens to the new gym? What happens to, what happens? Do we ever get credited? Do we keep going on probation for 15, 20 years? What happens if we never get the money?
That's a good question, because we know that as of right now, the bond that we tried to do, to do locally-funded project, and of course, in the economic times, things are, this is a very difficult time to ask anybody for extra money. What do we do? You know, we, we can't foresee the future, but we're hoping that by the work that we're doing, we're hoping that we, you know, we're still accredit, we're fully accredited. And the work that we're doing, we're hoping will, will keep us there. I'm very confident, you know, without saying 100% confident, I would say 99 point whatever, that we would maintain, whether we're on probation, we're still fully accredited. And that ultimately is, is the, is our goal.
Well, my worry is, is when I'm 60, I'm going to be sitting here, and my son's going to be up here saying, well, back in 2010, we were trying to get renovated, and, you know, this and that. And then I'll be sitting there saying, well, it's going to take us four years to get accredited. That's all I'm saying.
Unfortunately, I was at school, in school, at the times that people were talking about that. So I do kind of feel like I'm sitting here doing- that, so I do kind of feel like I'm sitting here doing the same thing. If we do not wind up on the state funding list, the firm is putting together some phasing projects that we could be, we could do locally as an option. But again, locally being the key word, meaning that we would have to pay for it as a community. But those plans, those long-term plans are being worked on, which is something I don't think Lisbon's ever had in prior years, is the long-term plans to say, "Okay, let's do this, let's do this, and let's do this."
So, when people come to look through your building to say you're accredited or not accredited high school, every time we make an improvement in our high school and they're giving us, it seems like what you're saying is, "Okay, I changed the electrical," and now saying, "Yeah, but, you know, this piece is a little bit crooked, so I'm not sure we can take you off probation yet." Is that the kind of, what you're, what you're going through? I just want all the general public to understand that it's not like, it's not like, "Okay, we fixed everything on this list and now we're all set." Because you could fix everything, we could have a brand-new gym, we could have a million-dollar bill, and they're still not happy with us. Is that, is that correct?
I think it's not.
Thank you.
Tim says yes. Go ahead, Tim.
I'm going to get in trouble for this, for interrupting you. When I was asked to serve on this committee, I said, "Are you sure?" And I said, "I'm not going to sit here and be quiet about everything. I am going to ask questions," and I think most everybody up here can attest that I have. What you asked is correct, in my opinion. Now, nobody, including anybody up here, or even the NIAS board, in my opinion, can tell you that, yes, you can fix everything on this and you're not going to have problems. And I'll use an example for the process we went through here, is the gymnasium, as Mr. Healy said, the accreditation happens every 10 years. This gymnasium has been here since the beginning of the school. So it has been fine through all of our accreditation prior to. Now it's a problem. How big a problem? You know, I don't think that's the only thing that's keeping us off from being accredited. There's more problems there, but the majority of the problems that were put in the last NIAS report are facilities-related. This is what, why we are going through this process and bringing this information to A lot of the things that were brought up, I'm sure everybody in this room, or most everybody saw the news stories and pictures and PowerPoint presentations, there are problems in the building. Some of them are from lack of maintenance, some of them are just general deterioration. A building, whether it's your house or this building, is not going to last forever. So things change. This gymnasium was the same, now it is a problem, but rules change as we go through the years. Same thing with educational issues. So, the short answer is yes, we can't tell you that if we fix these things, everything's hunky-dory. Because by the time we fix these things, we could be five years down the road and going through the process again. But we need to start somewhere. So, this is why we're bringing this information forward. We're hoping that by bringing in professionals, and I'm going to tread lightly here, I've said this in a more blunt manner, and some of you may have heard this, but what we're doing here is we're bringing in professionals that know what they're looking at with the building and telling us where our problems are, what we need to fix in the short-term, and I think that's what needs to be kept sight of here, is what is important, what is, for the safety of the building, you know, the people that are in it, what do we need to fix to make it an adequate facility? And is it an adequate facility? Can we make it a functional building, a safe building? And that's the reason why we're sitting here tonight. And I'll go on longer if I don't put it down.
Good evening. My name's David Bowie. I'm also a graduate of Lisbon High School, as are three of my daughters. And my father was on the building committee in 1950 that put this place together in the first place, and his name's on the plaque outside in the hall. The big question I have is, I'd really like to see the total picture. What I see tonight is very encouraging in terms of what we can fix up and what might not work, but you're giving us only a very small portion. This 350,000 or half a million or whatever that amount is, doesn't go very far at all. And it's already been asked, what's the cost of a new gymnasium? That would cost many times what this whole complex cost in 1950. We know the money's, some of it, most of it's going to come out of our taxpayer dollars. I'd really like to know what I'm spending my money for. I think we do need to invest in this building, even if it's only for a 10 or 15-year period. Hopefully, if we were even to go to the step of building an entirely new complex, this building would still be able to serve in some other capacity, either as a school or as some other community facility, and it's worth investing into it for that purpose. But I'd like to be able to look at it in terms of, over the next 15 years, I'm spending $1,000 a year of tax money to get what out of it? Am I getting a, in 10 years from now, we've spent this money, but we still have now a 70-year-old building, and how much will it be improved? I'd like to be able to compare those, so it's not, I know you can't answer that tonight, but in the future presentations, I'd like to see a more comprehensive look over a period of the whole building process. What would it cost to do all these renovations? When would it be done? How much of that is going to be state-funded and local? Because I think we need, we deserve to get every bit of this state funding that is our share, and we shouldn't be forced to do things locally because things aren't moving along. But we do need to fix rotting windows. And if that can be put together, I'd really like to see that, because some people might want to spend a little bit more, because it might be worth a lot more in terms of what they're going to get.
Thank you. Actually, I've only been in this position for a few months, but I think my goal would be to have my name on one of those plaques too, to show a new building, renovation or something like that, and I believe, we have a very diverse group up here. When we first met, it was interesting to say the least, because everybody had their own opinions. As for the total cost, we have additional meetings where we would bring that stuff up, where we want hard numbers, we want actual numbers for any type of renovation. When you look at, you know, what would it cost to do the north side of the building? What would it cost just for the windows, the heating units, things like that? That's all what will be coming in the future, in very near future, because we are prepared to look at that. Tonight is more of a, I wanted to keep it small, and the reason being is that you start throwing out what the cost of total renovation, you know, new projects. I can assure you that I feel pretty confident that this committee is making the recommendations where all on the same page, that we will renovate this facility. When it's all said and done, we're going to, the community has spoken very loud about having the high school in this location. It's central in the town, people drive by it all the time, and if they're telling me that, if these, the professionals are saying that we can renovate this building, then we will. And we will have those specifics, but I think that considering all the information that you've heard tonight, I didn't want people to get, I didn't want people to get discouraged by what the total, what the total cost would be for a total renovation of a school. And I wanted to have actual numbers, because I wouldn't want to say 25 million. I know that numbers have been thrown out in the past and people remember those, and they were much higher, much higher than the numbers that we're seeing, or numbers that are coming around now. So, I wouldn't want to give any, whenever I present money issues to the, to the public, I want to make sure that it's as accurate as possible.
Oh, sorry. Yep, done. If I can be heard, this is done. Anyway, I think in addressing the money issues, many of the people who are on the committee and on the school board and various functions in the town are very skittish about talking about money, new money, money that the town needs to find. And the other statement I've heard over the course of time is, if we vote something down, they just come back at us again. How many times are they going to come back asking for money? That makes people skittish. So, the thing that I would say to, in answer to that, is that some of the problems just don't go away. They are real problems, and they have to be addressed in one way or another. This particular problem won't go away. And as it's being addressed or attempting to be addressed now, we're getting more bang for the buck now than we would've last year. The bond issue that was proposed last year had some good things in it, in that it first was going to do an analysis to see whether we needed a new high school or a renovation. And many people out there said, "Why don't we just see what we can get for our money? And why don't we pay for the analysis?" Well, we've paid for the analysis. And now we see what we can get from our money, and we see that we don't need a brand-new high school. So the rest of that little, that bit of funding, and if we take in-house money, the $49,000 to service a new bond, combine that with stimulus money, then we get some bang for our buck and somewhat down the road, and that's the whole point.
My name is Dorothy Fitzgerald. I've been a resident of Lisbon Falls, town of Lisbon, since 1959. I actually graduated from the old high school on Campus Avenue in 1949, two years before the gymnasium here was built. So, I've been around a long time, and first, I would like to commend the building committee, the school committee, and Superintendent Green for all of their hard work. This is not an easy task that you've been asked to do. It takes a lot of time, it takes a big, huge commitment in time and away from your families, it takes a lot of research, and you've done a great, great job. You've come up with a workable plan, something that's going to sustain the building for years to come, and David Bowie said it better than I did. When you put renovations into a building, whatever happens in the future, the, it won't be lost. It'll make a usable building for whatever, unless the building has to be torn down to replace with a school. Gymnasium in the future, who knows? Maybe the state and the economy will turn around so that we can have a new school building in five, 10 years. Who knows? Another thing I'd like to bring up, a lady mentioned, teaching. The teachers, the faculty, teach, not the building. It's nice to have a nice building to work in, but... And the teachers and the morale and the support system has been really, really great here. Service centers, as you mentioned, the, the location of a school is so important. So many kids can walk to school. Every child that walks to and from school is one less that has to be bussed, which is a cost savings. No building is perfect. The new town office building was built, there are problems with it. So we can build a new school and still have problems. We built a new elementary school, and there have been problems that have been corrected, probably will still need to be corrected. So, nothing's perfect. We can build a new high school and still have some problems. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, my name is Pete Reed, I'm on the school board. I got one question for the engineers. Is the roof on this gym strong enough without being reinforced to carry the extra weight of the heavy, the new insulation put on there? I know, I know roofs are rated, snow rated, for snow load. I was a constructor for 20 years.
Sure. Yeah, no, we're still in the process of analyzing this. We have all the data of the actual, of course, the frames themselves and then the additional Ts and the braces. So we're in the process of doing that, because one of the problems is, when you put in insulation, now you have less heat loss, so now you actually don't melt as much snow, so it actually carries more snow. So that's one of the things we are looking at right now.
Okay. The reason, we need to do this, energy, the gym roof, windows and stuff, the money we'll probably be saving in energy in the course of a year will be money that we can use to put back into the school, into facilities and work. We're going to have, once we stop the heat loss going out of this building, we're going to have substantial savings in energy costs, especially when the electrical system's upgraded, the heating system's upgraded and everything else. That's money that can be put back in the facility system. I'm familiar, I worked in construction for 20 years. In fact, when the addition was put on the high school here, and when the addition and the second middle school was built, I was a subcontractor, I had some work on here, I did some work, I was an independent installer. I installed operable walls in the buildings. And so I've been around construction for a long time. I was a superintendent for general contractors, which we built schools. I used to work for Hodgkins Incorporated, you've probably heard of them. And I also worked for W.E. Klutry as superintendent, so I know quite a little bit about construction. I think we need to go forward with this. We don't know where the state money's coming from. All you got to do is pick up your paper in the morning, and they're screaming up there, they got $350 million shortfall, and it's mostly going to come out of education and human services. And what we can do locally by bonding without raising taxes, and Mr. Green has done tremendous job that comes up with this, and so does the facility committee, and I think they've worked very hard to come up with a practical plan that we can live with and not impact the taxpayer in this town, because people in town, and not only in this town, every town, are having a hard time paying their oil bills, having a hard time paying everything else, and we can't ask them for more money.
I assume you're going to vote yes on Monday, right Pete?
You're going to vote yes on Monday then, right?
Hi, my name's Jerry Couture, and I graduated from here a long, long time ago, and Pete, you stole my question. So now I'm standing here, I don't know what the hell to say. But anyway, I did think about a few things. I was wondering if these gentlemen had a cost analysis of what, what's spending to heat this place right now? Did anybody check into that at all? I'm just curious if they, anybody knows how much it costs annually to heat this school?
We're doing a, we're actually doing an energy analysis, our, the people that we have contracted out right now are conducting a energy analysis for all the schools, so we don't, unless Daryl, you have it?
So, so you must have an idea of how much we spend for oil to heat the school every year, I'm sure. I know how much I spend.
We currently, we currently have Siemens doing all of our heating and stuff in the buildings now throughout the district. They're currently, they have done a energy audit, they're going to be here on the first school board meeting in February to do a presentation, so we'll have some firm numbers at that time.
Okay, so we don't have any numbers we can throw out tonight then?
I don't have anything right off the top of my head, I can get some numbers.
Okay, but I'm sure it's in the thousands.
Oh yeah.
Oh yes. Now, out of curiosity, these gentlemen have been doing these studies, do you have any idea how much less you think we'd be spending on oil by installing new windows, insulation? And part of that question is, if you're going to, if, on the bright side, if this goes through and we get the money, what's the priorities? And I'm just curious, because being a contractor myself, the first thing I do is, if you don't have a roof, you don't have a building. So you've got to do the roof. And if you're going to do the roof, you're going to do the insulation, correct? And then the windows? So that, what I'm trying to get at basically is, how much money are we going to save by doing this compared to what we're spending for oil now? Just a question.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't done the detailed analysis yet, and that would be done as part of a capital renovation project. It's kind of a double-edged sword, and a lot of facilities, when they're older, and it's not necessarily the case here, but one of the things you run into in old uninsulated buildings is, yeah, you're getting a lot of heat loss through the roof and through the walls that aren't insulated. But on the other hand, a lot of schools have plywood over all the outside air intigs. So once you bring the ventilation up to current standards, you're bringing a lot more cold air in to meet current code requirements, so you're using a little more energy there. The good news is here, a lot of the ventilation dampers are still operational, the louvers haven't been The louvers haven't been covered with plywood. So, yeah, I mean, by insulating the roof and walls, I mean, and I'm just going to throw out rough numbers here based on, you know, just rules of thumb, it wouldn't be uncommon to save 20 to 30% in your oil costs. And again, with modern equipment like modern boilers, you can get upwards of 97% operating efficiency on a, on a modern boiler, especially with natural gas, which you have right outside of this facility. That boiler currently is probably operating at more like 75, 77%, and it, and it's got a state-of-the-art number-two fuel burner on it. You just don't get the efficiencies on your number-two fuel.
Right. Because that doesn't factor in the price of oil going up all the time, like it's starting to do now. So, that could cut our savings down significantly, but on the other end, we'd be spending more with the oil stuff, so...
Right, and that's really another benefit of natural gas. There's a couple of benefits of natural gas. One is you reduce your maintenance costs, which, you know, that's money out of pocket as well, when you have to maintain things. It's cleaner, takes a lot less maintenance to maintain it. And natural gas, over the years, has been, you know, they're on the bandwagon like every other fuel company. I'm not going to stand here and say they're not. But natural gas, over the years, has been pretty stable.
Right.
And overall, when you factor in the efficiency gains, I don't think I've ever seen a time when natural gas wasn't cheaper to operate than number-two fuel.
And cleaner.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, I guess that's about everything. Basically, my, my last question is, if we do this bond, you told me my taxes aren't going to go up at all, right?
Yes, I mean, you're...
The money's not climbing.
I mean, we have, obviously, with the state subsidy reductions, you know, the interest, or not interest, but salaries benefits, the insurance premiums, things like that, the money, what I'm telling you, and what I'm telling the community, is that we have $49,962 that we have in our budget, that we want to use for a $350,000 bond, that would help us do the roof, because the roof of the building, the front, the main entrance, those are, the facilities committee's priorities are the front end, the front of the building, the main entrance, and the roof. And then we'll, and then we can go from there, but it's using existing money.
So, your biggest challenge now is to have everyone know it's not going to raise their taxes?
That is a major challenge.
Good luck on that one.
That's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
It is, it is starting to get late, so I, instead of getting into the specifics, one of the things with the engineers, like I had said, I wanted to keep away from, you know, how much savings is this? And that is for future meetings. Tonight was just to present this, as much material as we can. We're starting to lose a lot of people, because we've been here for a couple hours. So, if anybody has remaining questions, if you could just line up, and then I'd know, give me an idea when we can conclude, that'd be great, but...
Hi, my name is Evans Denniston. I'm a relative newcomer to Lisbon Falls. I've only been here four years. I have no kids that went through this school, I didn't go here. My wife does teach here. I do feel that the school is kind of the bedrock of a community, and it's very important, and I commend you all for what you're doing. I think it's, we're moving in the right direction. I, I have a question about the, your short-term priorities. And I may have heard wrong, but I believe in the report, the engineers and architects were saying that the fire alarm system and the fire suppression systems were barely adequate or inadequate in some situations. There's the case of the heating and air transfer units in the 50s wing with the grills and the doors, which compromises the exiting corridors. I'm curious why life safety is not your top priority for your short-term goals.
Well, I think when you look at safety, I mean, right now, when we start making renovations, the biggest safety concern, major safety concern that is identified in the NEASK report is the fact that this building is unlocked. So, we are addressing, this committee has met, and we are addressing the NEASK issues primarily. We know that the systems in this building are almost, you know, 40, 50 years old and are outdated, but they still work. So, I think where our priorities are, our priorities are addressing the NEASK concerns first, and trying to, to be honest with you, we're trying to demonstrate to the community that the money that they are, that we have in our budget, and the money that they're spending, is being put to use. Because I think this conversation started this evening is by, "Why haven't you done anything?" I could build a brand-new roof on this building, and I guarantee that 90% of you wouldn't notice it. We start putting new windows inside and on the school, and you'll see, not only are we going to be saving energy, but we're going to be renovating, and the people in this building, you'd be surprised what a coat of paint, some new ceiling tiles, means, means the world to them. So, we're trying to, again, address NEASK first, and all that stuff will come as, as we go.
Right. No, I realize aesthetics is very important. I'm just, I'm concerned that the, I mean, the exiting corridors and the, and the fire alarm systems are extremely important for everybody's children that are in this building. And I think that's, that's more important to me than putting new windows on the front or putting paint on something.
I am the safety person. I have children going through, six children going through this school, and I still have three more to go. I know that they have the fire alarms, they have their drills, everything runs well, but when there's a lockdown, there's a problem. People can walk in and out that front door, and the office staff is too far away, they don't even know who's coming in or out. I can walk in that door, go down the stairs, go down the hallway, and nobody knows I'm there. I can come in and go visit Monica and not sign in. It's a safety issue in this school about those doors and the entrances. And to just fix that main entrance and have every other door locked down would be so much more safety for my children. I know that the fire alarms work. I've been stuck in the building, having to leave during a fire alarm one time. So, I know they work, and the kids get out. So, right now, for me, a priority would be that front entrance and every single door in the school locked. When they had that robbery, I don't think it's fair that the principal and everybody else has to be going around locking doors when they should be in a room securing themselves instead of having to make sure every door is locked. I, I, I'm always over that issue.
Thank you.
[inaudible] The fire alarm system is in here, just doesn't want the today's home. And actually, the fire alarm isn't really a matter of blind tissue, it's that it doesn't support the pillars for expansion. So, if we start to expand the building spaces, we don't have the ability to expand it.
Thank you.
Actually, I just thought of another question, but the one I came up again for was in regards to the cost analysis of the heating. And I'm not quite sure, I don't understand why we are not able to go back to last year's and find out how much we spent last year.
Oh, we, we, you have it, Ken?
Okay, okay, that was...
Okay.
We can get that for you, we just don't know it off the top of our heads. We don't want to be spouting figures that aren't accurate. That's the only issue with that.
I must have miscommunicated that part.
You know, I wrote down, I wrote down questions, and one of them was the energy audits, and we could get that, we'll get that information on the webpage. So, if you want to fill out the survey and just remind us, any other thing, we will post these questions and bring them up at the next meeting.
Okay. Secondly, I do think the modulars are a very problem, a very big problem, and I have been hearing tonight that we want to take them out because they're very costly, but how long will that be? Because we've needed them for the space, so I, I'm kind of confused with that.
Well, I think that after, I think if, in the reports tonight, those modulars are over 20, 20 or so years old.
And we're still paying that much on them?
We're paying $21,000 a year, so if you start doing the math on that, you find that we probably could have done half, you know, of, one of the additions, or, or an addition to the school. So, it's money, we have to make, we have to make some tough choices. It isn't going to be easy. It isn't going to, you know, staff are not going to be happy about not having a room of their own, they have to share, but the committee felt that, under the circumstances, and I know there's more than, you know, the majority of this town hates the fact that this, that we've been paying $21,000 a year on those portables. And to have them removed, you know, is, you know, will be a good thing. If, in six years, when the fifth graders get up and we weren't approved for a new building, we know we have space to put new portables, but at least there'll be 2,000 and, you know...
So, when do you, when are you planning on not having the portables anymore?
We plan on, our lease expires in August, I believe.
Of this year?
August of this year. So, we, we're planning on taking the savings from that and adding it for the bond.
Okay, and that's when the class, other classrooms will be to, back, or two-in-one class or whatever, correct?
Correct. We have to look at that. We've done space analysis. We have some proposals for the art room, transferring that. We have proposals from the engineers for moving the main offices, creating classroom spaces upstairs. But again, that's all, you know, that's all in the early stages.
Yep. I appreciate all the information. It's definitely helping a lot, and I thank you for that.
Just to talk about the modulars, it was, the state used to reimburse the school district to lease those. It was five years ago that they stopped reimbursing school districts. So, we've been paying on those ourselves for five years. So, I didn't want everyone to think that we've been doing that all along.
Hi.
My name is Ryan Buzzell. Sorry if this, if everybody knows this already, but what exactly does school being on probation mean?
Being on probation, um...
Mr. Carville, I now have the microphone, and I'm going to respectfully disagree with what you think is it being a moving target. What it means is, I, I have the experience of chairing, visiting teams to schools, and I am the people that go into the place and say, "Oh, look at the cracks in the walls," or "Look at these problems," and then documenting it and sending those reports up to NEASK, okay? One of the things you note is, the people that go into these buildings are not engineers, okay? So, the engineer's information will trump what seems to be a physical or a visible disability or defect. And hopefully, all we have to do now is take their information and say, "Hey, that's not really a structural problem," and they'll take it off of our list. But what it means to be on probation, there's three stages of accreditation. One is accreditation, the next one is accreditation with warning, meaning you have at least two of the seven standards that are deficient. Then, probation is if you have more than three of those standards that are deficient or you have major safety and facility concerns. We are on probation because of the facility, not because of the education. We have slowly, and, and I hope methodically, tried to improve all of those deficiencies. And I will tell you that somebody asked, "What happens if we make all these changes? Are we going to get off probation?" I'm going to tell you right now, if this building is completely renovated, you're off probation. But it will take many, many years of slow, progressive changes to acquire all of those improvements. And I've got to tell you, the biggest thing after getting all the heating and electricity and all those things done is going to be this gym. That's going to be the final straw that will get you off probation. I don't see us getting off probation until all of the renovations are done. That may take five, that may take 10 years, but I'll tell you, I can guarantee you this, if we do nothing, we're going to lose our accreditation. Did that answer your question?
Okay, I have one more question, and you can probably answer this one, too. What happens if the school, if the voters keep denying funding and the school does lose its accreditation? Where do the students go?
Well, you know, it's, that's, that's a very good question. Where do the students go? They go to Lisbon High School. They will be attending a school that's not accredited. Please understand, accreditation is not from the state. We're certified from the state to be a high school. We are accredited by an independent organization called New England Association of Schools Colleges. And what that means is, when you, our students are preparing to go off to secondary schools up to colleges, and they are from a school that's not accredited, they are given lower priorities and acceptances to those schools. The other thing is, if we have a student that's attending this school and transfers from the school, one of the things I do as a principal, I accept credits from other schools. And if they're from accredited institutions, I accept those credits without question. If they come from non-accredited institutions, I have to make a judgment call, and I'm not obligated or bound by taking those credits. So, essentially, somebody in the ninth grade could transfer to another school, complete a full year here in an unaccredited school, and they might not get any credit when they transfer, they may have to start the ninth grade over again. That's really the ramifications, not to mention that if you're in an accredited, non-accredited school, high school, no one's going to want to move into your community. Many people want to move out of your community. There goes your tax base. You think you're having problems right now? That's exactly what will happen. Did that answer your question?
Yep. And... I'm sorry, one of the things, as a new superintendent, there's a couple of things that have come up, multiple issues. One is, there's superintendent's agreements, and I will be honest, that we had multiple superintendent's requests, or agreement requests, because people felt that we had lost our accreditation, and I can say between eight and 10 this year alone. You start, you fix the interior, you get a good feeling about the school, and people will come in here, so...
One last question. Does it require a referendum to reality, to move the funding from the modular and bond to $350,000 bond, or does...
It does require a referendum to not only apply, or to approve a bond, and the modular lease money is part of, what we're saying is, we would use the money that's, that money that's already in our budget to pay for the bonds, and yes, it does require a referendum. We are working on a timeline right now and, and doing all the legal paperwork, and that will be, as I mentioned earlier, that's what we'll be moving, or the school committee will be talking about it on Monday night, we'll be moving to, more towards a bond, and then the facilities committee will maintain and keep you up to date on our building application and facilities work.
Thank you.
With that, I just, again, I want to thank, I know that we've lost a few people, but I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I really want to thank the facilities committee for all their work. We will, we will, again, be advertising for other informational meetings, and you will be hearing in our reports the progress that we make on the bond referendum. So, thank you very much, and have a great evening.